Okay, we'll call the workshop for July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four to order. City Council Workshop referenced citywide projects and two thousand and twenty five budget planning. I'll turn it over to City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan. Good evening, members of the City Council. One moment while we. I think we're up and running. Wanted to make sure the presentation was viewable by the public since we'll be going through a handful of slides tonight. Tonight's Mayor Ryan has asked me to provide an update to the council regarding citywide projects with respect to as a city embarks on our two thousand and twenty five budget planning process. This will help to give you a refresher and an opportunity to talk about our upcoming projects and the related components, I think, that are relevant to not only ensuring that the projects will be successful, but that we are aligning our budget for twenty five and even into the future appropriately with respect to the resources that we will be allocating towards the efforts to achieve them. So the goals for tonight would be to ensure that City Council has an understanding of our current and upcoming citywide projects. So I will go through the projects with you and something that I will ask from the council after tonight is to prioritize the list of projects. Now, some of them are in process and you should be very familiar with them. But aside from that, it'll be the ones that we want to say, okay, what's the next sort of wave of projects coming? From there, it will, that priority list will allow staff to develop timelines and processes for how to achieve those projects and bring them to completion. And then the other component to tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit with the council is in regards to the broad topics of operations, capacity and level of service. And we'll be talking about staffing needs and software needs because I think they really align together and complement each other well when we're talking about all of these broad projects. As I mentioned, we will be, I will be asking for a list of priorities from each of you by the end of the month. Other feedback tonight that I will go through and then discuss and we'll get some feedback at the end is regarding our City Hall Improvement Project. And then that priority list from the council emphasizing on two thousand and twenty five and two thousand and twenty six projects specifically. We won't go through all of that so that it's clear. Your feedback will be provided to staff as part of their developing their budgets for two thousand and twenty five as we go through the next four to five months with the budget process. As an overview and a reminder, so in two thousand and twenty three, the council for the first time set a two-year list of projects. And I wanted to just at a high level summarize the list of projects that we were working on. Takes two slides to kind of go through all of those items. But we were very successful in completing a lot of projects and or making progress in the planning phase for a lot of these projects that will carry on into the next couple of years. And so as part of our strategic plan, it's continuing to now take those projects that are in the planning phase and transition them into the construction phase for the next two years. Council might be familiar with this slide as part of our truth and taxation meeting and some other conversations. We talk about how our comprehensive plan at a thirty thousand foot level. We use that as our sort of visioning document. We take our citywide budget, which is our annual allocation of the resources that the city has available. And we use our strategic plan to implement that long-term vision of the city by using those annual resources and the allocation we have in our citywide budget. Benefits of our strategic plan, it's just a reminder, is we're promoting our best practices, preservation of our environment, allowing business to expand, maximizing our services and revenues. And from a city perspective, it's providing that roadmap for what we're doing in the, I'll say, short term and long term so that the public knows what our vision is and how we can best provide those services. Our strategic plan specifically includes our long-range infrastructure, policy and ordinance synchronization, employee retention and satisfaction, safety plan, and operations efficiency plan. Now, the operations efficiency plan component of the strategic plan has been probably the least discussed since two thousand and twenty one when we implemented the strategic plan. And I believe that this will become very important as we work on our two thousand and twenty five budget and into the future is really looking at how are we going to most effectively and efficiently align our organization to achieve our goals. So that's really the lens in which we'll be provide, we'll be talking through some of these specifics tonight. I thought it'd be interesting to, to kind of dig into some numbers and look at some information. So Nissos population, as we're all familiar, is right around two thousand year-round residents. Our census from two thousand and twenty says nineteen sixty seven. But from the two thousand and twenty three Department of Revenue information, we're right at twenty, two thousand one hundred and twenty one. And two thousand and twenty two, we exceeded the billion-dollar tax base mark for the first time. And the information from the Department of Revenue includes eight hundred and fifty-four cities. A hundred and twenty-one of those cities have over a billion dollars in tax base. The average population of those hundred and twenty-one cities is thirty-two thousand residents. Now, that does include Minneapolis, St. Paul and Rochester. If I take those out of the equation, we're still at twenty-five thousand residents. So we're a far cry from two thousand year-round residents to twenty-five thousand. Seven of those hundred and twenty-one cities are under five thousand population. So we all know Nissos is unique, but this is just another way to see that, yes, we are very unique. Where we have a small year-round population and we have a significant tax base. So what does this mean? Again, it reaffirms that Nissos is unique, a unique community. We need to be intentional about our planning and our strategic planning and the direction that we take, hopefully to achieve success for our residents, our businesses, our taxpayers, our staff, the whole organization. With respect to that operations efficiency component of our strategic plan. And talking about operations, capacity and level of service, there's two components I see that are probably top priority within that. And talking about staffing needs and then software and systems needs. And really, what is the goal for the city, for the council with respect to the level of service that we want to provide? What we have been doing and then what our vision is for the future. So first challenge, number one is staffing. Nissos has always been a small city and therefore we have had a small staff and we're a small organization as a result. Very, you know, expected, understandable, consistent, and we've operated the same way for many years. But I think it's fair to say that all of us recognize the increase in activity and the requirements of each department and the needs and the demands that our departments are experiencing within. One of those significant challenges that I've seen over the last couple of years is really when we talk about our departments of one specifically. It's becoming a burden that feels like we've sort of lived its life in that department of one component. So for example, we're in transition with planning and zoning. While the office, the staff that works in the office, we can provide some baseline support and help for those who call or drop in as needed. There's still not that person there to help provide backup when that person is either no longer in that seat or if someone takes a vacation or has a sick day or is gone. It also limits the ability for that department to be successful because there's no one else to really bounce ideas off of, to talk through challenges, to work on tasks together when that is your focus of a job. It's great to have someone to work together and to share those responsibilities and to, you know, have sort of a team mentality. So it creates sort of a lack of support for one person when they're expected to know really the, you know, the breadth and the depth of a position becomes very challenging. Planning and zoning is not the only department. I use it as an example as just sort of to articulate the point. The other challenge to consider and to think about in something that will come back to the council in more detail as part of the budget process is really when we talk about our software and our systems. Our systems are department-specific, pretty common to have a system that is meeting the needs or the specific requirements of a department. For example, the pickle has a point-of-sale system, right? Very specific to that. But we're getting into a scenario where our systems aren't talking to each other or we haven't set them up that way. And so it can lead to operational inefficiencies and sort of lack of information sharing and, and lack of ability to make things easy between departments sharing. And the question really is, how much do we want to make, make it a priority to embrace technology by making it easy for both the city and the users of the technology, the public? And what are the public expectations of our services provided through the lens of software and systems? And does that align with our goals as an organization that I mentioned a couple of slides ago to say? What are our goals and what are the public expectations and how do we, and how do we bring those together? These are just a handful of examples that I put together as I was thinking through sort of the software and systems that we have opportunities to create a better, bring in more of a broad umbrella for utilization of technology. I believe they've become more accessible, I'll say, less expensive than they were in the beginning. That's not to say that they're inexpensive, but I think there's been real improvements. Another example, also from an internal perspective, is a system in which we can share HR information or city policies or other things that staff might want to look at on a regular basis. If we have a way to easily have that just there for staff, that would be very helpful. So as I wrap this piece of the presentation up, as I mentioned, we'll be talking more with departments during our budget meetings later this month. I will, there will likely be more information to come to the council as part of the budget information. But I think also looking at not only our projects, but the staffing required and the systems and structure that will achieve that success will be also very, very important and very helpful. With that, I will transition into the citywide projects component of this. I provided a couple of pieces of information for the council. One is on the screen that you see. You'll see that in your information. What I tried to do was I tried to just list out the projects that we have, we're in process, we are talking about, we've been talking about, we're trying to plan for. Try not to get too hung up on the, the calendar side of that where I'm trying to just list out some ideas for planning. It gives you a visual, it gives you an idea of what we've talked about in the past, but it's very fluid and that's part of this conversation tonight. What I will do is I'm going to go through each project. Most of them I will very high-level just mention and move on to the next. There will be a handful of projects that we will spend a few extra minutes on and discuss. But most of them, I just want to make sure that you're familiar. And then when I'm done, we'll wrap up and ask questions and kind of talk through some of that. Now, all of these have been, as I mentioned, have been, they're on the list because we have been talking about them in departments or we're in the process of planning for these projects or something like that. I feel and believe with the exception of the two at the bottom, which we'll talk about, most of all these other ones have been identified as priorities. But timing plays a big role in that and knowing how the council feels about which ones need to implement before others will allow staff also to plan so that if there is a transitional project or something that needs to happen in between the, we don't have the ability to make those improvements today or in the next five years, but that's a longer-term project and we feel it's important and we want to keep it on the list, then staff knows we need to create probably a transition plan to make that work in the short term, waiting for the long-term project. The list here is, I roughly calculated the cost. We're talking about forty million dollars worth of improvements. Now, that includes city water, which is about ten on this list, does include the hockey rink. I put it about seven. But we still have a significant list of projects. And even more, the, you know, more important reason as to why we want to talk about this and have this in our minds as we talk about budget. So the first handful of projects. These ones I'll go through really quickly because the first five we have been talking about, we have been planning for and or in process. Mills property purchase, we're in our due diligence phase with that. Downtown master plan, we are embarking on that plan here over the next six months or so. Just a note, the downtown master plan is probably the only thing on this list that isn't a tangible type of project. It's more of a planning type of project, but it does relate to so much else on, you know, on this list. So I thought it was important to just note and to be aware of. Parks, we're working on our Gully Trail final project, the two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six road bonds we've been discussing. Lift station one rebuild, the council may be familiar with that. If you're not, please reach out to Tom Blommer and set up a quick meeting with him to get, get some of the specifics and the background on that. Lift station one is one of our major lift stations within our sewer system. It has been on our schedule the last few years when we go through our budget to rebuild it. But we haven't had a lot of conversation at a council level yet about that. So please feel free to reach out to Tom if you'd like to talk more about that. These next two items, I will spend a little bit more time in discussing with the council. So our City Hall roof repairs and our City Hall interior remodel conversation. As I shared with the council, Sourcewell has approved our funding application, so we will receive fifty thousand dollars from Sourcewell. The improvements are specifically to go to a new roof and the clarister windows. And the question was raised at the last council meeting, can we start to work on getting quotes for that project? Well, those two items just alone exceed the statute requirements for having to obtain sealed bids. So we have to go through a full sealed bid process just for those two components. And so with that, I wanted to revisit with the council if you are interested in addressing additional building deficiencies at this time. I did provide to the council a list of the cost estimates that Woodset provided us last summer. I think you see that on your, at your seats there. And really, that's just to sort of refresh your memory on the components. But on the back, which is also on the screen, is I summarize it by kind of specific area. So I'll go through them really quickly. So our new roof and clarister windows is the hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. The other exterior improvements, if you recall, because the city, the council, we did a kind of walking tour around the building and we talked about what the other improvements that were needed were noted at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Interior improvements, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, that's things like carpets and existing building interior improvements that were identified as at end, at end of life or other improvements that were needed. The interior remodel conversation was a hundred and thirteen thousand, but we'll talk more about that in a minute. Access control and cameras. We also looked at a couple of years ago improving the building by going away from the key system and doing electronic access control. So we looked at that and we looked at adding cameras for improved building security. For City Hall specifically, that was sixty-three thousand. I did also provide information to you regarding access control and cameras for the rest of the city buildings. That is certainly something, if you want to consider one component, I wanted you to have information for all of it in case you wanted to say, let's just do everything. I do believe that there were quite a few cameras as part of our first run at looking at that kind of idea of adding cameras to our city buildings, so I'm guessing there's an opportunity to scale back. But I think in theory, the question would be, do you want to consider that or not in just City Hall and or broadly across city buildings? I also include the last quote information that I had from a couple of years ago for a generator at City Hall. Quite expensive, a hundred and fifteen thousand. Potentially that could be combined with potential pickle building project for trying to, you know, split costs. I included it here just for your information. All in told, an estimated cost for improvements across the board for this building is at one million dollars. To specifically speak to the interior remodel component. This was the proposed idea that we discussed last summer that was tabled. And depending on the council's interest for some of these other components, looking at also saying, how can we set this building up for success to get ten, fifteen, potentially twenty years down the road and not have to really worry too much about it? I would say out of all of these areas, the highest priority is really looking at that front desk customer service area and making sure that it is effective and efficient and would allow for additional staff to be able to provide service to those customers, residents that are coming in. So certainly that would be something to consider as highest priority. All of the areas are important, but again, we have to prioritize as well. So my recommendation for the council to consider here tonight is that staff, building staff would review and modify the improvements that we identified from last year and see what's necessary, see what's not, see what we can maybe schedule for future budget needs and incorporate into the budget going forward. We would bring you a final recommendation to the council in August. Then we'd reach out back to Mike Anglin from Woodset and have him help us to facilitate developing those plans. Present those to the council and then complete a bid potential bond issue depending on what that dollar amount is and construction process. The Sourcewell funds need to be spent by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which feels like a ways away, but as we all know, time goes really fast. So as I finish up, a couple, just a couple more slides, we'll come back to the City Hall piece specifically for, for council feedback. Just a couple more pieces of information as far as the projects as we continue down the list. We've been talking about a new pickle building that planning's in process. We've been talking about Parks Department, pickleball and playground and how we can get some momentum going in those projects. Lift station twelve build and a three seventy-one road infrastructure. What I mean by that, by the, by the footnote there is specifically focusing on the roads that we would need to build in order to make the potential highway-fundaged property resellable. Focusing on those two projects together to ensure that then those are attractive for potential developers. Continuing on, looking at the parks for the hockey rink, then back as road infrastructure, city water system. And then the last two that I had highlighted in blue, because they might be a little bit newer ideas, just to kind of float out there, is we have talked about a public safety building. I was thinking about this specifically with respect to fire and EMS services. And the challenge that we have right now, again, back to staffing, is that if we were to grow our parks department, we don't have a place to put people. We don't have a place to put more equipment. Same goes with Public Works. We are growing our staff in that regard and they don't have a good office space, desk space area. They're sort of all-in-one with this big break room that they use for multiple purposes. And how do we appropriately provide the spaces that staff needs to be able to, again, get on computers, do their work and also facilitate, you know, efficient work? So if that building, if the fire hall were to be freed up because we created a new space for them, potentially that's a good reuse of that building and potentially is an option. Just an option. There's a handful of other options to consider. The other, the one at the bottom, again, just a maintenance building addition for staff to have more of a dedicated desk space, office space for them to do their work, have their break room and then the other space that they already have for their equipment. So those are just newer ideas, something to think about. But again, it's more of the, how do we plan and ensure that we know how to address current needs and then planning for the future? As we go through all of these projects at a staff level, we will create a document that will look something like this for each project. And it will identify each sort of major decision point or action item along the way. Not everything, but just to give the council and staff a sense of where things will, when things will happen and, and who they will be engaging with along the way. So last month, as an example, I had the two thousand and twenty-five road bond on the screen. The preliminary road list came to the City Council in June. You approved that. And then now Tom and Bill is, they're finalizing the road list. They're creating the updated cost estimates. That will go to Public Works Committee in July and then so on and so on. So this will give you a visual, will give you an understanding of the steps we're taking with each project. A lot of them are very similar, but sometimes they're, you know, unique in some of their nuances. And we will then provide that to the council as appropriate to keep you up-to-dated, up-to-date on the progress. So with that, perfect. I will turn the meeting back over to Mayor Ryan. I would appreciate feedback on the City Hall Improvement Project specifically to know what components you would like us to move forward with. And then I provided you a list of all of those projects. And what I'm looking for is your priorities of these projects. Now, some of them are already in process. I think you'll know which ones those are. And so just keep that in mind and you could potentially just cross those off the list as sort of a, we're moving forward with some of those things. But however you will like to prioritize them, I would appreciate that you would do that. And then you can drop this off, you can email me, take a picture with your phone, whatever works to get me that information that will help us as we continue to work on our budgeting and create that two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six project list. With that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll kick off with the City Hall part as liaison to the City Administrator Office or the, the Clerks Office, the City Administrator stuff, the City Hall area. I, I think staff getting back to us and letting us know what their priorities would be is important. Putting, you know, for, for that, if we're going to end up having to take a bond out to do all the repairs, especially if we include exterior repairs, I mean, the building doesn't get any younger. And it's, you know, it's just things, certain things are just going to wear down. We know what we have to get done. Several conversations with Tom from Public Works, you know, when that wall gets opened up, I'm kind of shudder to think what we're going to find back there after all the years of leaking. So there's going to be
More problem.
A lot of issues that are going to come up. So what do we do? What, what makes sense for a bond if we need to do that or whatever? And so that would have to include for staff, what do they need? What do they need to be successful? If we are going to add additional staffing, where do they go? How do they do what, who, you know, the shuffle? So I think that, you know, I like that idea. You know, there, we can't, I mean, it would be nice to just stroke a check and do everything, but that's not going to happen. So I would, I would like to get staff's idea. I think that's an important thing to do for the City Hall because we know we're moving forward with part of it anyway. We have to. So that's my two cents on the City Hall part of it. Mark?
I know there's a lot of things that have to be done. But I think the staff has the best idea of what they think needs to theories of where they think the priorities are for the let's say renovations of the City Hall. I'd leave it to them.
I think it's important to maintain what you got and, you know, repair things and take care of the leaky stuff just like you would at your own home, you know?
Yes, I'm on board with getting the consensus of what the staff's desires are. It's always a, not a terrible place to start, but in respect to everything that we know we're going to have to make difficult decisions on, I think it's going to be very important for us to be cognizant of what type of dollar spend is going to be on the. type of dollar spend is gonna be on the upgrade of this place versus just the maintenance. I think we all drive down County Road seventy-seven and see if the city of Lakeshore has for a City Hall. And their taxpayers seem to shoot that down, getting renovated every single time it comes on the ballot. So with our beautiful building that we have here, it's a blessing. I think that it'd be worthwhile to see what their, the staff's preferences. I'm not in here every day, you guys are. So um, taking that into consideration, one with the dollar spend on the back end of that as well.
I guess, I guess for me, we could hit replay of exactly a year ago in July. Um, I feel like we're beating a dead horse. A year ago, we all voted down not to do the interior remodels and to focus on the exterior. At that time, we had WSN come out, we all toured the building, the outside leaking windows, the roof, the gutters. We decided that that needed to be done and go forward. We voted down this other interior remodel because we have today still extra office spaces that aren't being used. Um, a little touch up on a countertop here or there, but looking across the citywide budgets and projects and especially now with the purchase of the new property and the public admin building, you know, with the fire, EMS, police, everything. We have no idea what's gonna happen in this building. And I think it's a pure waste of money to do a whole big remodel project in here at that price tag. Currently where we're at with the unknowns. And I guess same conversation, go back to last July, we had when we voted down the interior. You know, and um said, let's fix up the building. Last meeting, we had a meeting here and it was raining in, uh, raining outside and it was raining inside back there. I mean, we can't prolong this outside because of the what ifs of we're gonna remodel the inside. No, for an extra six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, next year's three hundred some, the quote was a little over a million. No, I mean, just because we're gonna do a bond or borrow more money, doesn't mean that we gotta borrow double or triple the amount to fix what we need. This is working, this is step one, but I cannot get behind at all spending another five, six, seven hundred thousand to remodel something on a what if we get more staff, on a what if we do this? When we don't know that we're getting more staff, we don't know what these departments are doing. Sure, the department of one, but it doesn't justify us. We have two thousand citizens. Does it justify us to have two planes zoning people? Sure, maybe in the summertime, but there's also outside contractors we could help come in during the heavy times. Um, and so I think for me, we gotta step back and look at even a bigger picture, prioritize. What do we want this town to be? What's our focus? What do we wanna drive? But remodeling the inside of this is just a no-go. I mean, this might not even exist in five years as the City Hall building with the potential, what we have with that other property with police, fire, EMS, everyone moving down there. And I think we have to have a little bigger picture before we just spend money foolishly here. So that's
I think we talked about it last year as well during this discussion in regards to what are the root causes for the, for the roof itself. It was nothing storm related, correct? It was faulty craftsmanship, if that's
Initial design, it was challenged from the beginning. That wasn't, I don't think, really explored on how can that get remedied when the building was constructed, so we are here today.
Can't file a claim.
Right.
No, but I mean, it needs to get done. We're here a year later and we're just kicking this can down the road. I mean, we need to get bids, however that process needs to go, and we need to get it fixed. Like, like John said, it's only getting worse.
Okay, so what is, if you're gonna bond, we're gonna bond um for it versus stroke a check. How much can, what, at what point does it not make sense? At what dollar amount does it not make sense to bond? You would mention this
You mean, you, a level, um, kind of lower, I mean, our financial advisor has said seven fifty probably is the lowest you wanna go, seven hundred and fifty thousand to issue a bond, just based on the cost associated, things like that.
It's too low.
It's too, is the lowest you would wanna bond, to issue a bond for, um, just based on the cost. Now, potentially, timing could work well with the property purchase. You can, you can issue two different bonds from two different statute authorities at the same time and have some efficiencies with that because they're just doing it all simultaneously. Um, but essentially, really, I think the question is, um, absolutely to understand that the costs are significant and just one component of this long list of, of items. Um, my biggest question really for the council was with respect to the other exterior improvements, which aren't insignificant. Um, that I think are really important to, to consider, but that wasn't a part of that source well application project. And so getting feedback from that, but it sounds like what I can do is just get staff's feedback. We will prioritize um the high level, important cause damage to the building type things. And we will, we will go from there. Um, just want to make sure you have um a set of the information and, you know, some of the challenges won't go away. Um, but timing is important and wanting to be mindful of that. So I appreciate that feedback and I think we can work towards ensuring that we know exactly what we wanna do and do the right things for this building to keep it in good shape is the important thing, and it's an expensive building to maintain.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Aside from that, really, I'm looking for your feedback or comments on these projects. I can put that back on the screen. Um, anything? Really, oh, I don't
I, I
My clicker isn't working.
I just have a question, and this goes to Tom, and I can't remember, you probably have answered this and I've probably asked you in the past. But when we start doing the redoing the roads, are we looking at putting in storm sewer at this time or not? Cause I mean, that, the, the, I think that's one of the issues we have to address also is with runoff.
So this first round of bonds, um, there's not gonna be a lot of underground, probably no underground storm sewer. But what there will be is curb and gutter directing, especially where we have steep hills. So like the wash off, wash out the shoulders. We spend quite a bit of money repairing that and it's, you're, you're always chasing it, so.
And I think we talked about that before, but I just couldn't remember.
So there's, there's a, I think it's in your council packet for the meeting later tonight. I have photos actually of all the spots for the twenty-five road bond. Where we have asphalt gutter currently or no gutter. And I would like to be able to replace that with concrete.
Yeah, cause the concrete would be better than asphalt.
It would last longer and none of that was really designed, it was just kind of
Put in.
Anderson Brothers throws a shoe on their um paper and they create a little bit of a garden. Where that spills out, we would probably wanna think about how that's done. I don't think this is a, a situation where we're gonna have a huge amount of right away we have to purchase or anything to do it because in most cases it's spilling into existing swamp or something, you know, so it's just a matter of
But there, wouldn't there be some areas possibly, we might have to put like runoff ponds in or, or
Maybe, yeah, and that's for the engineers to take that information and give us, what do we have to do?
Cause I know that's a big issue with a lot of
But, but the, you know, one of the reasons we wanna address um the edges of the road with real curb and gutter. If you look at most of the city streets, where are they falling apart? Well, it's on the edge of the road. People drive off the edge. They, they damage that asphalt gutter if it's even there. Or they just plain bust up the edge of the road and eventually the granular material that makes up the shoulder washes away and it, and it just becomes this process where it just keeps eating into the road and causes further problems. Ideally, and I know this is probably a never gonna happen in this law kind of thing, there should be road ditches. I mean, if you look at our best roads that stand up, they have actual road ditches. But there's a desire by a lot of folks to have tree right up against the edge of that pavement. Um, I think I've talked to this group and in our Public Works Committee. Um, there's um the state and others are starting to look at what they call smart salting technology. Well, what I had explained was is if sunlight can hit the pavement even a little bit, we start to reduce the amount of salt usage that we, that we, we do. That also adds to the deterioration of pavement. The more salt we put on, the faster it deteriorates. So I think by having at least some minimal clearing, we can one accommodate a ditch for drainage. Two, allow a little bit less canopy of the street to help us with the snow removal and ice from um, and I've given examples of where that looks the best, but I'd be happy to talk to any of you and take you for a ride and show you some of this stuff too.
Well, I've seen it.
I think, I think it would, once you see it, hard not to see anymore. And you can really see the opportunities. I, I think one of the, the emerging concerns that, environmental concerns that are gonna come out in, in this lakes area is road salt. The tons of road salt that get put down is ridiculous. People demand it. How, how do we mitigate that? You know, and still provide for a scenic roadway. And I think uh adding curb and gutter and smart, and ditching in a smart way can be done without really detracting from the aesthetics of the roadway. Um, my best example of that is when we, when the eighteen was moved. People thought that was gonna be the end of the downtown, it was gonna be hideous. The fall that thing opened, it, it became a, a picture site, a roundabout. There's people that take pictures on that almost every day. It's, it's gorgeous. That, that drive through there in the fall, when the leaves turn, it's beautiful. And it has full road ditches, it's, it's a wide right of way. No way does that take away from the up north feel in my opinion. I, I would like to at least consider that as we're going through these road bonds, especially the twenty-five, because that's the more rural sections of our city. The twenty-six bond, it's both more on what I would call the urban areas, the downtown, grand view. Those are the places where we're gonna have underground sewer that we're gonna wanna look at.
Real, real quick with that though. Tom put together a real nice presentation at last Public Works with pictures of all these different areas and stuff. So if all of you, I'd recommend to see and look at that, that really helps give a vision for it too. But then also too, in conjunction with that, just so maybe everyone's up to speed. Can you talk a little bit to the increase in the dollars for these road bonds? So, you know, when we did it last time or when you did it last time for a mile of asphalt, it cost X. And this time it's, what's the multiplier this time? And the number has just gone
Oh, yeah.
Yep, catastrophic on it.
Yeah.
You know, and that's
It's significant. Um, forgive me, I don't have the exact amounts in my head. But if you start thinking in terms of double and triple, what we spent on the last go around in twenty uh, you're, you're getting close. Um, and then on top of that, you know, we are building the roads to last. So when we go through, we're fixing base corrections, we're doing the drainages Joe was suggesting. That costs more money per mile.
But it only makes sense.
But it, but in the long run, it will save the city money and it will um, give everyone a greater satisfaction. I won't get flooded with phone calls every time we get a heavy rainstorm, but the shoulders are washed out. And people can't understand why we don't deal with it in a more comprehensive way. Well, we are trying and, but it's gonna upfront, there'll be an expense to it. Now, one nice thing is, is once we uh put in concrete uh gutters. You know, they'll last, that will last more than one cycle of paving, repaving. So, you know, it potentially could be either fifty or sixty years. All that, you, we're giving our kids and grandkids a great gift by dealing with some of this now.
Do we have a, have a couple of questions? For both of you, I guess, but Tom, uh, road bonds for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, do you have a rough estimation as to what twenty-five would be?
We have a, a very rough estimate that we got from Joe Debell a few months ago. Um, I don't have that with me, unfortunately, I can provide it.
That's okay.
I think it was about four million.
Four?
Four, yeah.
More a billion?
And I think, yeah, and I think that's low at this point.
It, it probably is. You know, we, I've added some, some curb and gutter in places that Joe probably didn't allow for. But I think it was a fair, it gave you a ballpark. You know, we're not talking a million dollars, we're not talking ten, but it's
And for context, the road bond that was issued in twenty eighteen was a million and a half.
What's the targeted area for the twenty-five road bond then?
So when we look at twenty-five, we're looking at roads such as Upper Roy, we're looking at Edna Lane. Roy Lane, forgive me if I don't remember.
So you're targeting this kind of an area versus
It's the entire city.
It's the entire city.
Yeah, there's roads throughout the city.
And that's the same for twenty-six?
Government Trail, Polk Road.
Yeah, there's a list somewhere that I've
Yeah, I provided you a list last
Yeah.
So uh, citywide too.
It's basically everything outside of what I call main. But they kind of, pretty mu, well, pretty much.
You've always kind of looked at what's in the worst condition. Right. It's higher on the list. Unfortunately, it's not centralized, like this section of the town is in the worst, that, that would be too.
So that is one thing I've been doing though, as we've gone through these road projects, beginning with the last bond we did. For instance, when we do Upper Roy Lake Road, I'm trying to do all the corollaries that come to it so that they're all aging at the same time, so that we can focus on one area with the next cycle. It won't do you or I pay a lot of good.
Right.
But the next group that has to sit here and figure this out, and they're doing a road construction project, they'll be inconvenienced for one summer. Not summer after summer after summer, road construction projects is, is the idea.
Lift station one rebuild?
So what that is, is
No, just generalized cost, if you don't mind.
I wanna say that's gonna be close to a million dollars
Yeah.
This year.
Million for that?
Yeah.
So the last one we did was lift station three and we're modeling this one after that. So that was done during COVID. Now, it's possible it would come under that, but just to
That was like half
Yeah, it was close to a half million.
And then to build a brand new one for twelve roughly?
Twelve would be probably pretty similar because it's servicing such a large area.
Okay, one? Okay.
Now, is that money bonded or is that coming out of the uh sewer fund?
So the lift station one rebuild, we've been planning for that. And so we have a good chunk of that money put away. Um, I don't know that it's a million dollars, but it's, it's significant. We've been trying to adjust that with inflation and we do look at that every year. We'll look at it again this year as we go through the budget and so it'll be accounted for in that cycle. I don't anticipate that we bond that unless you try, unless you're looking at um maybe doing the station twelve at the same time, maybe you take that money and you do a bond for both and then you're using that what we have set aside to help finance both, I guess.
Okay. Um, yeah, backage road infrastructure. So when MNDOT came in here and presented to us on the tables out here, there was discussion about call it what you want, but I believe it was a, a credit for every median that would be removed, right? Do we have any additional clear indication as to what they're thinking that dollar amount's gonna be?
Two bucks. It's not much.
Uh, uh, you know, Jenny might correct me if I'm, if I'm overstating this, but I think the DOT has moved away from that promise.
Of course.
Probably fair to say that, at least not to the same degree that they used to. I think there's definitely cost sharing or opportunities, um, because they, they wanna achieve certain goals and certainly so do we. So if we can align those, I think they're more than willing to discuss that. So there's opportunity, there just may not be as much as in the past. Um, but that's a part of all of this conversation and um certainly, um, Tom was gonna mention it. Um, at the next meeting, he could certainly do it now as far as getting your feedback about some of these preliminary concepts as they keep working through that is, is important as well.
I mean, a part of what I'm doing here is go, as Jenny presented, speaking with you, Tom, and I know Amber and having you up here to be able to go through your park projects too, but just in general, outside of just trying to act something immediately because it's not, it's not preferential or it's not timely perhaps. It's trying to also come up with a notion of how would we, if it was at the number one priority list, how would we pay for that, right? We've spoken at the liquor committee multiple times of if a new pickle came to be, how could we go about it? We've discussed multiple times, a revenue bond tied into the actual revenue of the, of the pickle factory and being able to perhaps increase prices, et cetera. So a lot of these looking like we can package them up together to one, what's gonna be sadly, one monster bond. That's gonna encompass a lot of your projects to come up from your side too. But when we look at three seventy-one road infrastructure and Jenny corrected me if I'm wrong, but that is simply just for the road infrastructure on the new Mills property that we're proposing, yes?
Uh, that, yes, that is correct, just trying to align those two separately from potential, the, the other larger baggage road as we refer to it.
Could, could that, and just in general, could that not be packaged, that infrastructure for that? That infrastructure for that parcel or those parcels be able to be included in an overall bond for the acquisition of the property?
It could. I don't know that we would be able to build plans and know what that looks like in the time that. We're coming up to engaging the bonding process. I think that would take.
In actual quotes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, or bids rather, but we would need engineered plans.
Two more questions money wise. Jenny, for you then, um, what's the city's tax base at right now for, for what we're? What we're at right now for our levy versus what our maximum amount is, if you have it offhand?
Don't know that I follow. Well, I don't know that I'm following your question. Can you say that again?
Our tax base, uh, we, when we've gotten down to actual levy decision time, I think our total percentage amount is like thirty-six percent or something.
Tax rate? Is that what you're asking?
Basically, I think you're asking how much can we bond for, correct? What, what do we have left? In our capacity to.
You're asking about the levy.
I'm asking levy because we're gonna have to factor in the, the bond payments and this, of course, right?
Yes.
So two parts. Where are we at with how much we're able to actually assess to our citizens in regards to levy?
Yep.
To then roll into the second question of all, what's our total bonding capacity? What's our aggregate here?
Um, our total bonding capacity is very high because of our tax base. It's a percentage of that. Uh, we are nowhere near that. I mean, nowhere near that. We have significant room, not to say that we'd want to do that in one soup, but we have. A large dollar amount. I can follow up with the council on that. And the levy question maybe to getting to the new debt service that would be coming online. With, uh, an issuance of a bond for the property purchase. We do have debt service rolling off of our schedules as well. So the net impact right now is not going to be significant. Um, probably, I'm gonna say maybe two to three percent of a levy increase. Um, for that property purchase bond because of the debt service that's rolling off. So we are in good timing with the road bond. As we know, we have to bring some new debt service on, online. Um, so the impact and, um, our financial advisors can structure the debt. To try to have as, as, you know, level of an impact as possible. So we're not, you know, kind of peaks and valleys as, you know, as much as we can avoid that.
I saw an email from the league today. Yeah, I know.
Oh, no, I just, I just wanna make sure.
I saw a email from the league that came through to our emails today in regards to. Uh. Apply now for the, or, or the windows open for the federal funding for. And state funding, I believe too, for city water infrastructure projects to that extent.
Okay, I didn't, I must not have seen it yet.
And you saw that too. I, I, I didn't have a chance to click it. I did see it, made note to bring it up today.
Sure.
Cause we talked last year, you know, trying to. Woo Representative Staber and try to make a better case for ourselves for not just this, but perhaps there's additional. Funding that he can pull for, for this area too.
We are looking into, um, a grant opportunity that might help offset costs for lift station one. So Bill is working with. Um, their internal funding specialist. Um, there's some grant money through the MPCA. It will be very competitive, but certainly an opportunity if we can take a chunk of that out, we would certainly like to apply for it and give it a try. So.
And then going to the Parks, Gull Lake Trail, the final section of the grant expired. Um, is that right? At the end of June?
Uh, for the past one, not the final one. The final one's the upcoming last half mile-ish segment.
So we do have funding allocated through that for this project?
Yes, well. Most of that is the grant funding that we will have some out of pocket city cost. Most of everything we had went into the one we just finished.
Correct. Okay. And do you believe for a public safety building that we've discussed on this new, uh, potential property acquisition on the Mills property? Think we can obtain, from your experience, you think we can obtain, uh, federal or state funding or various grants to be able to? Cover that cost?
I think that project, that type of project is always very desirable. There's a tremendous amount of support for public safety and for. Fire departments and, and the like. So it's certainly something that. Um, there are opportunities out there. We could, you know, say that that's really the, the funding priority for something like that would be to achieve some kind of grant. Or, or other state or federal funds, if that was the decision the council wanted to pursue in that regard and then say. Um, kind of a to be determined based on. Funding received, grants received, and then go from there.
Okay. And then. Lots to talk about on the Parks and Rec side, but.
Real quick on the Parks and Rec side though. You know, back to the slide where, what were we? Seven of seven cities in over a billion dollars category? Is that the number?
Um, yeah, yes, seven hundred five thousand population.
And so, I don't know, I would still. Like to see the city somehow more formally engage with our community. Obviously. Um, we're in a unique situation with, uh, you know. Um, people and resources here, you know, for, you know, large donations for projects like that, you know, and see. A, a little bit more active outgoing. You know, engagement to try and, you know, get more donation funds, people like that involved, you know, just a bigger, a bigger overall plan. Not even for Parks and Rec, but just, there's a lot of people in the community that are willing to donate if, if it's their cause, whatever that is, you know.
Sure.
And just tap into the resources that we have and that's the people.
Certainly, we've set up some of that structure with the Community Foundation Fund to provide that avenue, which is a good first step. A lot of communities who are very successful, um, the Nisswa Lake Park, the Friends of Nisswa Lake Park, um, activity for a handful of years was very successful. Because of their involvement and that's really the success I've seen in other communities is because they have that community. Um, organization that really leads the charge. So that would be maybe also an appeal to the community to say, how can that be created? Or what does that look like to help offset the limitations we have as staff? But if we can create some of that structure like the Community Foundation or some more of the informational piece to help with that. Engagement, we're certainly happy to do that.
Any other questions? Then I know we're gonna need to rewind. Or they're gonna need to, we, we should probably adjourn this meeting and get ready for the next one.
Yes, we will start at seven.
Intertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.